Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of the 22nd of May, 2017. Please let us all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month, immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item for business?
As a reminder, due to Memorial Day, there will be no City Council meeting the week of May 29, 2017. Our first item on the agenda will be our public hearing consent agenda, items one through seven.
Would anyone like to comment on any of these items? Okay, next item.
That will conclude our consent agenda, public hearing portion. We can vote on those items.
Any questions? All right, please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Do we need to have an introduction in a second?
We do have to have an introduction, excuse me.
Sure.
Introduction for items on consent agenda. Eskridge?
Yes.
And a second? Second. Gaylor Baird. I'm going to call the vote. Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item?
Next item would be our public hearing liquor resolutions, item number eight. And nine, I will call together, application of Stop &amp; Shop Inc. doing business as Stop &amp; Shop Number Six for a Class C G liquor license and the related manager application of Jason K. Lasing located at 1502 West O Street.
Please come forward.
I'm April Johnson, standing in for Jason Lessick.
I'll have you take an oath. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you fairly believe it to be?
Yes.
All right, could you tell us about this application, please?
Yes, we're just looking for an application for 1502 West O Street. It's our new Stop &amp; Shop. Just like to let you guys know that we already have three current liquor licenses in accordance with everything, and we're just seeing if we can get it moved through.
Okay, any questions? Carl, and then Jane.
Yes, thanks for being here. I see on your, on this application that there's a request for a license that would Class C, both on and off sale. Do your other licenses, are they that way as well or not?
No, we're looking forward to being able to do growlers, which the state of Nebraska requires you to have the C license to, in order to do that. It would not be onsite consumption at all. We would just fill the growlers, they would be sealed, and then we'd sell them for consumption later.
Thank you.
Okay.
Same question.
Anyone else? John?
Just in case our viewers...
Just in case our viewers don't know about a growler, why don't you describe that for them?
A growler is just like a 32-ounce can that they fill from a keg and they seal it right on the spot. So it's just like a big can that you would open. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Like a Big Gulp with beer.
It could have been a Big Bear, yeah.
Cindy?
So, do you have kegs tapped at any of your locations now?
No, we do not.
So this would require a keg be tapped and there'd be flowing beer, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then who would be dispensing the beer?
We would have our licensed seller server people would seal it and dispense it. We'd sell it just straight through like we would, you know, any other product. Does that make sense?
So, but you don't have this at any other location?
No, no, it's something that we're just looking forward to for in the future if...
So would that take place, would that be on a daily basis or for periodic events or...?
I think it would be on a daily basis, you know, that you could come in. Like, I know there are a few liquor stores that do it now that you can come in and just... It's beers that you can't get normally that are pre-canned somewhere. They don't normally can them, so this way you can get it, have your, whatever flavor it is, you know, on the keg. They can fill it up so they can take it for later consumption instead of having to be there at like the bar, and that's the only place you can get it for open consumption.
So would the individuals be filling these growlers?
Absolutely not, no. It would be a certified cashier that has went through all of the policies and procedures that would need to be in play for it to be able to go.
So it would be tapped behind the counter?
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Jane?
The question, are you allowed to give samples to your customers so that they can try that and say, "I want that one," or I don't?
No, I don't believe so, because any time we do sampling or anything like that, we have to get a temporary restricted license and it's a little bit different. So I don't think that would be available to them, no.
Mr. Chair, could we have both Investigator Schaefer and perhaps our city attorney come forward, please? All right. If I... You're welcome to sit down for a moment.
Thank you so much.
As you're approaching the bench, well, Mike, does he need to be sworn in? No.
No. Investigator Conan Schaefer, Lincoln Police Department.
Thank you. My question would be, they're asking for a Class C license, and this is the first of what apparently many will get. Could you explain this to us about that? Because, for example, my colleague just asked a question about samples and so forth, because as I understand, a Class C is serving and so forth.
There are actually two off the top of my head that I can think of situations like this, although this is a convenience store, you know, we think of it a little bit differently, but there are a couple of off-sale liquor stores that do the same thing, and one that was just approved last week. So the only way that the licenses can get the Class G endorsement or have the growlers is if they have a Class C license. So some of the off-sales have started applying for a Class C license, and then once they have that, that they can get the class or the growler endorsement and do that. And what the Liquor Commission is doing is understanding that they don't really intend on doing on-premises consumption, which would normally be allowed with the Class C. So they're putting the restriction on the license promotional tastings only for customers, which is the same restriction on all the Class C licenses for the grocery stores or Walgreens or all of those. Obviously, we don't have people in Walgreens, you know, drinking on-premises. But it's a, an additional marketing avenue for them to have those craft beers or those beers that aren't normally available. But it is, what I've seen is set up in an area that is controlled. And when we think of a growler, originally that was with craft breweries only and the glass 32-ounce jug, but nowadays, so they don't have to worry about the sanitation issue, is they have a small canning operation right there. So they'll pour the tap beer into the can, seal it, put their label on it, and sell it out the door like they would any of the other off-sale products that they have.
Do you feel reasonably comfortable, then, that they wouldn't be able to use the full extent of that Class C license with that restriction that the Liquor Commission puts on them?
I do, I do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Cindy?
Thank you. So did I understand this is actually like a two-step process? Once they have this, they'll still have to apply for a Class G?
Yes, in this instance, they have already submitted their Class G application. It doesn't technically get approved until the Class C gets approved, but that'll be moments after. So once it goes back to the Liquor Commission, and the Liquor Commission does the final approval on the C, they will then immediately approve the Class G as well along with it.
Okay, and in the meantime, what do you, between now and Liquor Commission, you don't see any issues with this at all?
No.
Okay, Lyrian?
Hi, Conan.
Hi.
When you say it's going to be set up in a controlled area, what kind of, you know, enforcement or sort of fact-checking on that does the department do? Or who is responsible for making sure that things are set up in a way that's consistent with the intention of the liquor license classification?
Well, initially, that's me, but then on a routine or daily basis, LPD Uniformed Officers do compliance checks, NSP does less periodic checks, but annually or semiannually.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Officer Schaefer? Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this application?
Terry Pope Gonzalez, 349 South First Street. We own the property, we've owned the property since 1942. We are first and now, they have a store on West O, so it's first and West O. Now, we have a lot of problems with the homeless with the alcohol. Now, you're going to put it on 15th and West O. So if we're going to need LPD and Nebraska State Patrol, right, be checking it, who's going to pay for that? Are we going to put on first responders? We're going to get another first responder on? Because we're going to sell more alcohol, right? So more drunks, more convicts, right? So who is going to pay for the Lincoln Police Department to go in there and check? Who's going to pay for Nebraska State Patrolmen to go in there and check? See, now me, I'm getting tired of paying. And I know a lot of people are getting tired of paying. Now, I don't care if you guys listen or not. Your convict-making factory next door, they pay attention. Those poor judges are sick and tired of all the drunks that come through there. Now, how much more alcohol do we need in this state? Do we really need that more drunks? And then, oh, of course, they can drink, they're only drunk, let's get behind a wheel. Now, who's going to pay when they kill one of mine? Who's going to pay when they kill one of yours, Eskridge? Because you're an attorney, right? Carl, I do thank you for the wheelchair. It wasn't where it was supposed to be, but they always make it hard for me. And it makes me angry when I come in here. But I watched the words, gave you my word. Now, Gaylor Baird, once one of your children that get run over or molested by a drunk, who's going to pay? See, maybe that's how you need to start looking at it. Who's going to pay when that drunk molests your child? Who's going to pay? Questions? Now, of course, the rules are always different when I come up here.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this item? Next item, please.
Item 10, application of SMG Food and Beverage LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 460 feet by 453 feet, labeled patron parking, and outdoor area measuring approximately 965 feet by 1,137 feet, labeled show cars number one, outdoor area measuring approximately 652 feet by 406 feet, labeled show cars number two, and an outdoor area measuring approximately 2,082 feet by 18 feet, labeled pedestrian bridge, located at Pinnacle Bank Arena at 401 V Street on June 17, 2017, between 8:00 a.m. till 5:00.
Good late afternoon, I'm Tom Lorenz. I'm General Manager at Pinnacle Bank Arena. We have three SDLs in front of you today. The first is for, let me take them a little, try to get them in order here. Would be Good Guys Car Show. This is about the third year we've done this. It's out in the festival space, fully fenced in area. We just provide on-sale to them out in the area. It starts about 9:00 in the morning for patrons. They get there and set up earlier, and it's done by 5:00 in the afternoon. It's a nice event, draws about 2,000 cars out of that area. Next would be Haymarket and White. This would be about our third year with that also. We do it in the plaza right outside the front doors of Pinnacle Bank Arena. It is a fundraiser for the Haymarket Association. We host that for them, a very nice evening outside, a nice dinner, the opportunity to have an open bar. And it goes out into the street, onto our street, between us and the rail yard.
Excuse me, before I move forward, let me go ahead and read item 11 and 12 in, since we have three of the...
Oh, sure.
SDLs. Item 11, which Tom was just talking about, was application of SMG Food and Beverage LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 700 feet by 448 feet at Pinewood Bowl, 4201 South Connington Avenue on August 14, 2017. And item number 12, also application of SMG Food and Beverage LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 329 feet from 240 feet and 22 inches at Pinnacle Bank Arena at 400 Pinnacle Arena Drive on August 4, 2017.
All right, please continue.
Sure, and the last one would be a show at Pinewood Bowl on August 14. We had previously come before for the other 10 shows. This is the 11th show that we've announced. It's logic, it is on the 14th, it's a Sunday, and it will be at the Pinewood Bowl area, a beautiful outdoor amphitheater, and should be a very nice show that night.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item, these items?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items eight through 12.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Lyrian. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item, please.
Our next item would be our public hearing resolutions, item number 13, approving a contract between the City of Lincoln and Cone Inc. for elevator maintenance services, city parking garages for a three-year term with the option for three additional one-year terms.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. We went through the approved bidding process to find someone to do the regular preventative maintenance on the elevators in the garage, contracts for just under $60,000 a year. This was the winner of that award, and we're confident that they will be able to keep us ahead of the curve on maintenance. It's something that this system does well and that we take very seriously, and this is the next episode in that pattern.
Any questions? John?
Mr. Landis, how many elevators do we have?
I don't know the total number. I'm going to guess that we probably have at least two in most of our garages, so I'm going to say about 14, 14 or 15.
Thank you. Lyrian? And then Cindy.
Is this a new contract or a renewal?
We have had preventative maintenance. I do not know the previous holder of this contract. I did have to talk to Wayne today, he's in...
We have someone coming to bail you out right now.
Thank you. New Orleans, and so he told me that these were the winners of that process. Bob, this may be the existing provider, I'm not sure if it is.
Please introduce yourself.
Bob Wallace, City-City Purchasing Agent. This is a new contract. A previous contractor was Alatech, who currently still has the remaining buildings for the City-City County and Building Commission. This one was specifically done for the Parking Division because they had some new needs that they wanted us to consider, and so therefore we issued the RFP and awarded to Cone. And there are 30 elevators that this covers.
And are there any changes in this contract then, besides the special considerations of the parking garage? Any, anything different about this than previous elevator maintenance work?
This one's more proactive in the maintenance than the current one that we have that continues with the other agencies for the City-City County and the Building Commission. It actually has monthly checkups and things that are done on a regular basis rather than waiting for things to happen. And so it also has a quicker response time for people that are locked in, some of the other things that happen with elevators. So the Parking Division hired a consultant for this who gave us some specs for things that we hadn't considered in the past. We've put them into this RFP, and they will be used in future RFPs when we do the rest of the elevators.
All right, Cindy?
Thank you. Okay, so there's a price tag of 251,000 plus over the next three years. Does that represent any change in the cost of the city for this year or this coming year?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Well, for the maintenance. You said you had mentioned there's someone that still has other maintenance contracts.
Oh, that contract, the Parking Division garages were removed from that contract back in January or February, and we've been on a month-to-month contracts since then. So they, the garages are not, were not included and are not included currently in the rest of the contracts.
And so is this costing us the same? That's what I want to know. Is there any change in costs?
I can't tell you that right off the top of my head.
Is there anyone here that can tell us that?
I can pull the information and get it for you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Other questions?
I think that, I don't want to presume to understand the question, but if in fact the question has to do with whether or not this will exceed the budget for elevator maintenance by the end of the fiscal year, do you have an ability to say that this will not?
No. I don't know what, I'm not involved in budgets.
Remember that, by the way, this will be funded out of the parking services, not the general fund. This is a cost that we derive from charging people when they come and use our garages.
And I understand that. I just wondered if we were going to be paying more.
So we'll get that information, correct?
Thank you.
Yes, I can email it to you.
All right, other questions?
All right. Mr. Chair, if I may, this is a resolution, we vote on it today. If there's concern for need of that information, then maybe we should delay this a week when that comes up for a vote.
I do know that this contract would take effect on June 1st because the current contracts do expire at the end of this month. So a delay in it would cause it to be, either have us renew or extend the current contracts again and hold off on this one, or we try to arrange for something different on this contract.
Well, you know, this is Bike Month, next month could be Walk Month with Walk-A-Ster.
Go ahead. Can I argue?
I'm sorry.
I don't know the answer to this, but I'm going to predict this was the low-cost winner of the RFP.
Correct, they were, the cost was considered as part of the evaluation factor, and they did end up, they were the lowest cost from what we received. So not only with the qualifications, but also the cost is what they were evaluated on.
In other words, we don't have a lower-cost option at the moment, at least presented by the RFP process.
Carl, then Jane?
Did the current, the company that has the current contract, did they bid on this?
Yes.
Okay, and you did not award them the bid?
Correct.
So Bob, it's fair to say that we're trying to be more proactive because I'm guessing that the elevators have had some issues that the parking customers may have complained about. And I guess from my perspective, if we're being more proactive and we're doing more preventative maintenance, then we're not being stuck with perhaps a larger bill in the short term and the long term. So this actually could be a cost-saving matter.
There's another feature to that, and it's not something that you'd normally like to bring up in a public hearing. There is a strained relationship between the existing supplier of services and parking services. We believe this has, this holds the prospect of an improvement in that relationship and the quality of services that we will receive.
Will we still get fun decorative elevators?
Yes, we will.
John?
If I may, since I own a few elevators, this is a fairly good price for the maintenance, especially in the parking garages. So I'd encourage my colleagues to consider that.
All right, any other comments? Thank you. Anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Item number 14, text amendment 17003, amending Title III Design Standards for Zoning Regulations by amending Section 4.3, Parking in Chapter 3.75, Neighborhood Design Standards to provide that no required parking space be allowed between the building and front property line except as otherwise provided in Section 27.67.030 and of the Lincoln Municipal Code.
Good evening, Councilmembers. David Carey with the Lincoln-Lincoln County Planning Department here before you this evening to explain why this is in front of you today. This is a change to the neighborhood design standards. It is directly related to an item that you've already acted on on May 8, which was the zoning code change to the language of the code. That has to do with allowing the parking in the front yard for, in the R5, R6, and R7 zoning districts. This is basically a follow-up. In a more perfect world, we would have caught this and had it come to you at the same time, but you've already acted on the zoning code portion of this. We're basically following up on the language in the design standards to make sure that they're reading each other and inconsistent with each other. And so if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, anybody like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Item number 15, approving Downtown Lincoln Association's amended 2016-2017 bid budget and program of work for downtown and West Haymarket Management and Maintenance Business Improvement Districts.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director. At the last budgeting process, this council put aside money for enhanced streetscapes. And this is an amendment to the work plan that the city has with DLA. It has a couple of different, that work plan has a couple of different aspects. Part of it is what we commonly remember as the BID, that's the maintenance, where the city and the DLA do the work downtown as part of the assessment process. There are also specialized contracts that DLA does. They provide the service, and we pay them for doing the service. Tower Square, Centennial Mall, there's several of them. This would be one of those in the sense that we would take $80,000 and we would make it, we would define the work plan that currently exists to allow for this work to be done by DLA. Again, the money's in the budget, and this is not a new appropriation. This is the delineation for where that money will be spent. And for those of you who are familiar with the Downtown Lincoln Association, they do two things that make them, I think, remarkable. First, they do the work very well, and secondly, they do it cheaper. If this was going to be done in-house, it would probably be more costly than what rolling this over into the work plan for DLA would be. Both the project manager for some of the city projects and the DLA representative is present. Do you have any questions?
John, and Lyrian?
Thank you, Mr. Landis. I know we visited briefly about this recently. First of all, where, again, is the 80,000 coming from?
It was, I believe, a general fund appropriation made by your last budget, so you've put the money aside.
For what purpose?
For enhanced streetscapes and landscapes.
If that's the case, why don't we, why do we have to vote on it today?
Because this is, this is a contract with DLA. If you were spending that in-house, you wouldn't have to do that. But this is where you're amending the... But this is where you're amending their work plan to identify some additional work inside the growing season and the sensitive time for the effectiveness of landscaping to be done. So, that's why it's here.
And could you identify what this eighty thousand would go toward?
Three areas that come to mind are West Haymarket, P Street, and the N Street projects. Those are things that come to mind, however, the project managed here. And if you'd like to ask, you know, further about locations or whatever, they would be available to you.
And what specific maintenance would it pertain to?
We're talking about plantings and carrying. What I'm not sure is whether or not this money will get back to the issue of irrigation. But that is a concern in the downtown area, and that's maintaining an irrigation series. But perhaps Caleb might be here to identify the specific purposes of what the money will be spent for.
Good evening. My name's Caleb Swanson. I'm from Project Control. We have been, over the past year or so, been tasked to assist in kind of identifying what some of these maintenance needs are. So, some of the maintenance items, I'll just run through a brief overview of some items that are included in here that aren't what you might call standard level. A lot of these areas have bioswales and things of that nature that require a higher standard of maintenance, both from the drainage system and then the replacement of the plants that are in those areas. Higher concentrations of things like bike loops or planter bowls. Irrigation is included in this to the extent that it is repair of failing systems. Often, there's not enough funding, I guess, to go around and replace all that might go wrong with an irrigation system. So, this helps to maintain those more intense areas that have a lot more irrigation than might be typical. There's some, some areas like on P Street, if you think where there's a lot of benches, a lot of street furniture, the picnic tables, kind of the wood deck outdoor areas. That's kind of a real brief list of a lot of the things. P Street has a lot of those, the banners, the hanging planting baskets, extra pedestrian ornamental lighting. A lot of these things that are, again, kind of, not unusual, but just a higher level of streetscape amenities than might be typical on some other blocks.
Lyrian?
So, I, we have done a lot of changes to downtown that would match up with what you've just described in terms of requirements, but I'm interested in the West Haymarket specifically and whether or not the West Haymarket JPA has set aside funds in its budget for this kind of a function as opposed to pulling this from the city's budget.
To my knowledge, the money that was set aside in the budget process by the council was to handle the issue of enhanced streetscapes. I don't know, and I can't either confirm or deny that JPA has a role into that, but I don't, I do not know of it, and I might have come in contact with it by this time if it did exist. So, I, I can't tell you that they do. I can't tell you they don't. I suspicion that they don't.
Other questions?
If someone else from the city does know, it'd be nice to have that answered before we vote today if possible. Oh, there we go.
Rick Payton from the City Law Department. Basically, when the West Haymarket addition was final platted, the streets were transferred in ownership from JPA to the City of Lincoln. So, the streets and streetscape belonged to the city at this point in time.
John?
Yeah. I just want to follow up with you gentlemen, too. The, you know, I've always had a concern that when we design things, we think about maintenance. And you mentioned both N Street and P Street. N Street was north of three and a half million. P Street was north of seven and a half million. They involve a lot of challenging features that added cost to the capital construction. And now, it appears that maintenance is also becoming more of a concern. And I guess, why are we doing things that way?
You have an administration that supports it and a council that endorses it. There isn't, there isn't a piece here that doesn't have the council's support. I mean, the budget was passed, the projects were passed, the designs that came to you and the redevelopment agreements were passed. So, there is, there is at least a body of legitimacy in the process that's been followed to create the designs that we have. It doesn't mean that we are immune to criticism.
I think what I would ask, as I've said before from this dais, that the design is so critical and that we, we have precious dollars. And, you know, I can look around the city and see a lot of other crime needs that are much greater than these expensive thoroughfares. And so, once those get rolling down the slippery slope to us, it's just, there's no way to change those. And so, really, a lot of it goes back to you and the other authors of these projects to be very, very careful and design in ways that are easy to maintain and a lot less expensive.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Question for law. Will you handle that for me?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. So, I'm looking at the resolution, and I'm just, it says it's for two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, September one-sixteen to August thirty-first seventeen. And I just wonder why we're looking at something that's, we're looking back instead of looking forward? Or is that just a typographical error? Or? And here comes another city attorney.
Forget the one that wrote on the contract.
Thank you.
Chris Connolly, Assistant City Attorney. The purpose of this is to amend the contract that is already in place, that is scheduled to end at the end of August of two thousand seventeen. It's meant to amend it to include these enhancements, this eighty thousand dollars. So, it's, we're filling the gap for the end of the fiscal year. And we're working on plans for going forward into the next year. But at this point, all we're looking to do is amend the agreement with DLA so that they can do these enhancements, these, this enhanced maintenance between now and the end of the fiscal year.
So, we don't have that agreement in front of us today, right?
That, that's going to get executed by the mayor.
Okay. And so, this represents eighty thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, seventy-five cents in new money for the DLA budget?
When you say new money, it's new money going into the contract, but it was approved as, as part of the Public Works Budget last year.
But it, but it wasn't in the contract?
It wasn't in the contract. That is correct. And so, the mayor will be executing a new contract, but it's part of the work plan, which has all the dollars in it. And so, the council needs to approve the movement of the monies from the Public Works portion to, to this contract so that enhanced work can be done.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Carl?
Yes. And don't go away. Because the question was asked a few minutes ago about the, the West Haymarket JPA, and is this something that we do? We do have an endowment that's been set up to deal with some of the expenses of Parks and Rec in terms of their maintaining the area. But how does this relate to that?
Yeah, this is going to, this is going to relate to taking care of the plantings and removal of trash and some of the things that happen on a daily basis that DLA does generally. The endowment is going to be used for replacing trees perhaps, or replacing benches, larger repairs, basically. Irrigation, I don't know. Caleb may be able to answer the question about irrigation. There may be some overlap there on irrigation. But generally, there, there are somewhat different coverages. So, the JPA does have money, you're right, to do some of the repairs there, but this is really more just on the basic maintenance of these plantings and trash pickup. Thank you.
Other questions? John?
Before I end up on Ms. Lamb's question, if this is eighty thousand and some odd dollars for three months, what's it going to be for a full year?
We, well, we don't have the full amount figured out yet. We're, we're working on what's going to happen for the next year. We're working on that at this point. So, I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you right now.
Expenditures for landscaping, however, are not equal as you move through a year. December, you don't spend the same amount of money that you do on landscaping as you do in June, or May, or the heat of August. I, I don't have the answer to that question, but I don't think you can work it, in a sense, on a straight-line analysis of the, of the year.
This eighty thousand dollars will, will cover, as I understand it, I think, if it's projected out for the enhanced portion of the, the maintenance, it would be about a hundred-and-fifty thousand a year. But since we're only going through the end of this contract year, I, eighty thousand is all that's needed. But a hundred, closer to a hundred-and-fifty, I think, was the number that was projected if you were to look at it on a yearly basis.
So, when was P Street finished?
I don't recall. Two thousand fifteen, maybe? I don't, I'm sorry, I don't recall.
And when was N Street Bike Lane and all finished? A year ago?
About a year.
About a year ago.
One would kind of think that having a hundred-and-fifty thousand a year so quickly is rather expensive. I mean, I, I know there have been some mention of traffic lights on the bike lanes that need repair, and irrigation is basically water sprinkler systems, underground sprinkler systems or those copper PVC tubes that are there that are subject to all kinds of challenges. We've got the same thing out on the new improved design entryway to the airport. You know, those are lying right on the top, and are we?
I can predict that the next budgeting cycle will have greater scrutiny for landscaping that it's had in the past, perhaps. The thing to remember here is that this not, this is not an appropriation. This is taking money that's in a pocket for this purpose, but giving it to the person who does this very well, and by the way, cheaply, by comparison, cheaply. So, it, it tells you how that money to achieve that end will be spent by the party who will eventually provide those services.
But that doesn't take?
And when we come back on another day to say, how much should we spend on landscaping and how much there should be for enhanced, and whether or not the projects and the plans that we have in place are overreaching or whatever, it'll be directly before you, councilman.
Well, it kind of raises a lot of concerns. You added employee to do medians, for example, the Centennial Mall, I believe, and a couple of other spots. We added a whole new full-time position for that. And we're just getting a lot of this, and, you know, my constituents look at other parts of the city, and they're just not seeing maintenance done. And we're suddenly, you know, if it's a hundred-and-fifty thousand or possibly more, or whatever, plus whatever's been spent, we're starting to talk about real dollars here. Even if it was appropriated, it was in there. Again, those thick budget books are challenging for this body to always look at. But it just concerns me that we have needs like, or wants like this that could have been designed better. I mean, the bioswales, the irrigation system were a kind of a Rube Goldberg to begin with.
I, I want to pipe in if I can.
Go ahead.
Looking back at the original plans for the M and N Street bikeways, two of them in the downtown master plan, they involved a parks-blocks concept that was much more intensive in terms of landscape and green space. And what you have today, well, absolutely, an enhancement to downtown is probably about the bare minimum. You're talking about bioswales with natural grasses. I mean, it's, and some new trees. I would say that it is a much pared-down version of what was originally envisioned and much cheaper than what was originally envisioned for downtown. I would say it's bare bones, yet still providing needed green space and at a much less significant cost. And if we've invested in it, we should take care of it. We don't want to let those die. Otherwise, we've wasted money altogether.
Your last statement's true, but I'd invite you to go to Indianapolis, Indiana, and look at its area.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else on this item? Thank you. Next item, please.
Do we not want to hear from DLA? Is DLA here? They were here. Oh. Sorry. I would like to hear from DLA. Yeah.
I'm Todd Ogden, Deputy Director of the Downtown Lincoln Association. And I don't know if you have any specific question, Lyrian?
Well, I know that the boundaries of the Business Improvement Districts have also expanded, so I assume that has something to do with this as well. And just wanted to hear about what you've been doing with the bids and, and how this is important to your ability to actually pick up trash downtown.
Yeah, there's been expanded boundaries and just, you know, more work for our crew. We haven't been able to be more efficient with that, but we do have separate bid contracts, which are specific things we have to do for the district. So, our goals with the bid is to treat a fair rate for all of downtown. So, a lot of this is more extreme stuff that we have to take care of. So, the city asked us to take care of some of this stuff, and our main district director hasn't seen anything green that he won't try to take care of. So, we were asked to do that, and we tried to estimate with PC Sports. I've been talking about this for over a year now, to figure out kind of exact costs and figuring out what we need to do to take care of this. And that was kind of our involvement. So, you're right. I mean, the biggest issue for us is with all these new kind of economic development factors with enhanced streetscapes and everything like that, we just want to make sure we can take care of them moving into the future. And that's our, our main goal at DLA.
Questions? John?
Yes. Mr. Ogden, from your standpoint, what would you see as the major components that are requiring this extra money? And I mean, specific, not the street or whatever, but the, the actual maintenance item?
I think there's some more out-of-pocket stuff, like hanging baskets, different things like that, where you have to purchase those out of, out of a budget where you can't get more staff time. So, we try to eke as much out of our staff as possible, of course, but there are certain kind of enhanced streetscape type stuff. On P Street, for example, those are pretty expensive banner poles. So, to fix those, if something does run of those and there's not insurance for it, that would be another issue, too. You know, the very things that are tracked into these districts are also probably the more expensive things in projects like this.
Do you have plumbers on board to handle the underground sprinklers that have been talked about?
We do as much as we can. We have a specialist in our crew that's been there for twenty years, and he's kind of our irrigation specialist, and he does as much as he can. But it hits a certain point, especially when you're talking about different zones and the timings of these, and when you have irrigation and hanging baskets and you have irrigation on the ground level, you really want to make sure the timing's right so you can be as efficient as possible on that. So, there are kind of more extensive stuff, and that's definitely something to look at. And hopefully, with more investment going to the irrigation, that's going to help us in the long run. So, it's the last manpower we need to water those. But yeah, we definitely do have a specialist trying to fix as much as they possibly can with these.
Or if you can't, you'll contract it out then?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to testify on this? Next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing resolutions portion. Next is our public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. Item sixteen is text amendment one-seven-zero-zero-four, amending Chapter twenty-seven-point-five-nine of the Lincoln Municipal Code related to airport zoning regulations by amending Section twenty-seven-point-five-nine-point-zero-one-zero to add definitions for shaded areas, and FAA by amending Section twenty-seven-point-five-nine-point-zero-six-zero to modify requirements for height permits, by adding a new section number twenty-seven-point-five-nine-point-zero-six-five to provide exceptions to require height permits, adding a new section number twenty-seven-point-five-nine-point-zero-six-seven regarding notice to FAA of certain construction adopting or revised Lincoln Airport zoning map and repealing Section twenty-seven-point-five-nine-point-zero-one-zero and Section twenty-seven-point-five-nine-point-zero-six-zero.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department also here tonight. If you have any questions, is John Large and Bill Austin with the Airport Authority. The text amendment before you is a result of a collaborative effort between the city, the Airport Authority, and the Home Builders Association of Lincoln, something we've been working on over probably about the last twelve months or so. And also then, worked out at the Planning Commission hearing, a compromise so that we could address several issues that as we started to have more growth in the northwest part of Lincoln, as we started to go, houses that were being built a little bit higher elevation, we wanted to make some amendments to our process so that we could, where we need to have the, the most efficient height permits and actually have surveys and things when there's large structures that we get those, but in some cases where we have houses that are being built, that we could have those done in a, in a large group in terms of the height permit, or even in some cases exempt them when it was not necessary. So, rather complicated amendment that is in front of you, but really is one that is a result of a lot of, of good discussion and compromises between all three groups. And certainly here to, if you have any questions, or if you have any questions for the Airport Authority as well.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Would also note that just for a notification item, we did request that this item be held over two weeks so that we can make sure we get all the correct notifications. So, we're requesting that you act on this and continue the public hearing until June fifth.
All right. Mr. Chair, are you asking for vote on that same date, or you want to then go to the twelfth for vote?
Yes, we're asking for the continued public hearing and the vote on the fifth.
Thank you. So, did you have a motion, John?
I'd move we continue public hearing to June fifth, as well as the vote on that same day.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Carl. A discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Bear?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Next item, please.
Did anyone else want to testify?
Does anyone else want to testify?
Were you here to testify? No. No.
Only two questions if you want. If we can avoid that.
Next item, please.
And pretty quickly, I might add.
Item number seventeen, approving a license agreement between the City of Lincoln and Verizon Wireless for replacement of telecommunications facilities upon city property generally located at thirty-four oh three West Van Dorn Street.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. This is a cell tower lease, uh, similar to the ones we've been doing for the last twenty years or so. This is actually not a new cell tower. It's rather just a lease to a, to Verizon to put an antenna on an existing tower.
Any questions? Lyrian?
Can you just confirm that the revenue from this lease will go into the Parks and Rec budget?
Yes. Uh, because this tower is on park property, it will go into the park budget.
Carl?
Well, let me clarify that because is this, uh, parks property or is this golf course property?
I, I always hold it as parks property, but I can't independently confirm that.
Here comes someone to rescue you. All right.
Good evening. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks Migration. This one is on golf properties, so the proceeds from this will go to the golf CIP.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Item eighteen, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Nebraska Innovation Campus Phase Two redevelopment project.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director. On April tenth, this council unanimously passed the redevelopment agreement for Phase Two of the Innovation Campus. It involved a fifteen million dollar building that the TETRAD folks were going to do and about three million dollars of TIF. Oftentimes, we do three pieces of work simultaneously. You are presented with a redevelopment agreement and that then contemplates a change in the capital improvement program, the CIP budget, and it also contemplates the authorization to issue bonds. They don't have to be done in that order. It's common, but not always the case. And this is one of those exceptions. The university and the developer were very sensitive that site, uh, work begin as soon as possible. So there was some pressure, uh, with the redevelopment being, agreement being written appropriately and, and to the satisfaction of both parties to act in April. Bond Council, however, wanted to continue to work at the language and make improvements. So the choice was between either waiting and doing all three at the same time or doing them in two steps. Give the developer and the university the timeline and the green light to do the work that they thought was critical on site with the agreement passed and then drop this third shoe, if you will, later. And this is the sound of that third shoe. It is the tax allocation bond that would be the execution of our agreement with, um, TETRAD and the university to do the, uh, Phase Two and the building of the eighty thousand square foot building and the transformation drive improvements and the, um, the work in the, what is now a gravel lot into a paved lot. Those are all parts of the agreement that you endorsed. And I would be happy to answer questions. Bond Council is here as well.
Questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston, two through three South Thirteenth Street, uh, here in Lincoln, just, uh, here to voice my support for the passage of the bond ordinance. Director Landis is correct. We had the need to put the surcharge in place to start the soil compaction on the site. That's why we had the redevelopment agreement in front of you back on April tenth. And we also wanted to take time with the bond ordinance to make sure that would accommodate both taxable and tax exempt, uh, tax increment financing indebtedness. And it will do that since we're build, we'll be building streets with a portion of the TIF proceeds. So, uh, the bond ordinance in front of you does that and we're pleased with it and would ask for your support on it. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
John?
Mr. Houston, a question came up with some people in the community about, uh, the tax increment financing, TIF normally being where there's a taxable entity. Now, are the grounds there paying property tax? How does that work on Innovation Campus?
It's a complicated question because the redevelopment agreement it had is not with the Board of Regents, which actually holds fee simple title to the ground, but the Board of Regents has also master leased the entirety of the Nebraska Innovation Campus to the, uh, Nebraska Innovation Campus Development Corporation, which has leasehold interest to the entirety of the, of the campus and thus takes it out of the tax exemption otherwise would be enjoyed by the Board of Regents. So it is taxable property because of, uh, that lease by the Board of Regents to the Development Corporation.
So they pay the same mill levies that all the other-
Exactly.
-adjacent properties would pay?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, so how long is that lease with the Board of Regents for? Is it, is it longer than the TIF?
It's ninety-nine years.
Okay. That answers the question.
Yeah. It's not my problem at that point.
None of ours.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Our next item is a public hearing on a ordinance third reading, item nineteen, text amendment one six zero two zero, amending title twenty-seven of the Lincoln Municipal Code related to the zoning code by amending section twenty-seven point six two point one zero zero to modify the front and side yard setbacks for car sales and remove conditions that are no longer needed by amending section twenty-seven point six seven point zero four zero to create a new parking requirement for motorized vehicle sales for lots less two car, two acres and repealing sections twenty-seven point six two point one zero and twenty-seven point six seven point zero four zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code.
Welcome.
Good evening. David Carey with the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department. We also have Steve Hendrickson here from our department. Uh, we are here to, uh, both explain this briefly and, and provide, uh, answers to any questions you may have on this item. Uh, what you have before you is, um, proposed as a three-part, uh, piece of, uh, information and action, um, that has, uh, adjusted over time as we've gone through this process and we, uh, come to you tonight with a, with a general agreement from the applicant with the city, um, to move forward with, uh, initially, this was a proposal to adjust the front yard setback, uh, to allow car sales, uh, to change the front yard setback to allow car sales closer to, uh, the property line, also to amend the required amount of parking, uh, for this use and then also to adjust the side yard, um, for the allowance of car sales for that use. Uh, what we have before you today now is, um, uh, agreement on the, um, new established requirement for parking, uh, on smaller car sale operators, uh, for two acres or less, uh, to have a required parking amount of three stalls for that type of activity. Uh, we are all in agreement on that. We also have agreement, uh, a proposed motion to amend that is in front of you as well, uh, to change the side yard, uh, setback, uh, to five feet, um, and then to allow car sales, uh, to be with, uh, closer to what otherwise would have been prohibited in the side yard, uh, moving forward. Uh, and then also an agreement to hold off on any changes to the front yard setback, um, at this point in time to allow further study of, uh, entryway corridors for the city, uh, mainly on Cornhusker Highway, but also along West O Street, um, to make sure that we are, uh, discussing that further and having a larger stakeholder inclusion in that decision-making process so to hold off on any action on the front yard setback. Uh, this proposal would allow this current operator to move forward with their operation. Um, and I will stop at this point, see if you have any questions. Steve will certainly be able to provide you a lot more detailed explanation of, of this proposal.
Questions for Mr. Carey? Cindy?
Yeah. Um, so I just wanted to, um, refer back to the hearing notes from the Planning Commission. And as I understand it, the, uh, the ordinance is currently in place with the front yard setback as it is, was one that was, uh, put in place as a result of input from the Westo Business Association and the independent car dealers along with the city. Is that correct? Car dealerships, excuse me.
The existing twelve-foot, uh, standard that you're talking to?
Yes.
Um, I-
Yeah, yes. There's a, a larger process when we were going down from the twenty-foot front yard setback to the twelve feet. Um, and those groups among others had input on the change at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Jane?
Um, Steve or David, could you address some of the confusion with the, the current compliance of, of those auto dealerships in the H-two and H-three?
Sure. I, I'll take a stab at that. Um, there's a lot of discussion for this proposal and this, this, um, this application has been on the, um, uh, the level of enforcement of the existing current, um, setback, especially for the front yard setback of the, which is the twelve feet, as well as screening that goes along with that. Uh, so we've had a lot of, um, good discussion on kind of the, the level of effort to enforce what's already on the books, um, but also to acknowledge that there is a, there's a challenge with this, this use of car sales because there's, the fact is that the inventory can move around fairly easily. And so this has been something that the building and safety department has been, um, kind of a, it's been a challenge for them to, uh, really make a, be clear on kind of to what level of enforcement will they be moving forward with on this. However, having said all that, there's been a very limited amount of complaints coming in on this use, uh, in, in general, throughout the city. So it's not one of those, um, items that has risen to the top of their priority list for, uh, for enforcement. They do do this on a complaint basis, however, to be clear about that. Um, so that's a little bit of the background on, uh, as far as kind of what we've been talking about. If you're going to change the front yard setback, the implication is, is that the city is willing to enforce that new setback. And that is part of what we're talking about now is saying we're going to hold off on that change and determine what truly should be or what could be that, that new setback for the front yard for car sales because we want to make sure that what, if we make a change, it is both what a consensus can be built on what that should be as well as that there is a understanding of how the enforcement can and will be done.
So when, when they came up with the reduction a few years ago from the twenty-foot to the twelve-foot, did the stakeholders have a way of, I guess, self-regulating or, or coming into compliance back then? Did they make a suggestion? I know it's, it's something that you're, you referenced that we're going to be talking about going forward, but back then when the reduction took place, did they, um, have an understanding that they had to be in compliance? And then what was the mechanism to help assist them be in compliance?
Um, I, I think part of what had caused some of the confusion over time is that some restaurants, for example, legally had parking in the front yard setback. And so there's a restaurant there for twenty, thirty years and the next car dealer comes in and sees the parking there and assumes that it is legal for his use, though for car dealers, they need to have at least a twelve-foot setback. And so part of our circumstance that we're uncertain of is some of the people who are out there today may have, uh, be under the mistaken impression that they are legally grandfathered in to have the parking when in essence, no, they were not. But there are other car dealers who have probably been there for a number of decades and did legally establish their parking back before there was a twenty-foot setback. And so that's been part of the confusion with some of the, uh, car dealers that are out there today is to, when did they establish the parking in the front yard setback and when that was legal or not? Because when this was set up, uh, no, we didn't set up a specific mechanism that said, okay, come in and turn in your site plan other than if you were getting a new building permit, if you're doing new construction, you would have done that. But what we've seen is a lot of people, these are buildings that have been there since the seventies, they move their car dealership business in there, assuming the pavement they have is, allows them to have cars displays there when it may not be the case.
So are, are the current auto dealers clear what a twelve-foot setback means? Do, do they think it means it's twelve feet from the curb or twelve feet from the sidewalk?
There, there could be some confusion about that. It is twelve feet from the property line, uh, because the sidewalk locations vary, uh, along Cornhusker Highway or Westo. It kind of depends on the circumstances. It's from the property line, but that's true. Some property owners may not be clear about that.
I, I do think that that's a good example of what a more detailed study and taking some time to reach out to those operators to be clear about what does apply and how would it apply at their site. I think there, that can have an opportunity to clear up some of that confusion.
Okay. Thank you.
Carl?
Thank you. Any idea how many, um, operators or car lots we have that would, would come under this? I count something like twenty on Westo Street.
We do have that in our staff report. We did do some, some work on that.
I can tell you, there are sixteen vehicle sales location in the H-three district and four vehicle sales locations in the H-two district. Uh, H-three is primarily located along Cornhusker Highway, West O and the interstate interchanges at Northwest Twelve Street and North Twenty-Seven Street.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Thank you, Jane.
Better ourselves.
So, um, and, and what we have before us is, is only the, the five-feet side yard setback at this point, right?
As well as the, the reduction in the parking requirement for the use on those smaller operators on two acres or less.
Okay. And, and I'm curious about the process, which by the way, I think is a, a really good idea to get, you know, not only, uh, the car businesses, but other businesses that are in, in these areas involved and, and talking about it and, and area residents too need to be at the table. So, uh, any ideas about the process, how, how that's going to work?
Uh, we haven't really nailed down exactly how we would proceed with that. I think we have to have some discussions about it and really lay out how we would engage as well as, uh, the information that would be shared and then a process of thinking about different options. One opportunity is that I, there's a lot of in, interest in the Cornhusker entryway, um, where also we are about to, uh, we are continuing to study and look into investing in a significant infrastructure piece for the Thirty-third and Cornhusker and Adams area. That, that process could be a way to package this with that. Um, and then through that, we could learn a lot about, um, the car sales piece and other land uses in there as well as an entryway design that we would want to see our, our city have. So that's one idea that we have is that we could bring that together because it's already had, got some momentum behind it as far as doing a, a study along with that infrastructure investment. Right? Thank you.
Lyrian?
Oh, no, Benny.
Benny? Nope? Okay.
I just have a clarification. In the entire city, there's a hundred and ninety-seven licensed vehicle dealers and I was just pulling up the sixty-four in the H-two and H-three.
That is a good point. And then so we do, we do want to be clear about what, what will apply to what, so it is the H districts that we're, we're specifically speaking to.
Very well. Any other questions? Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Yes, but it won't take long.
You have five minutes anyway, so.
You may recall, my name's Terry Barber and I represent the neighbor of the applicant out at Thirty-third and Cornhusker. I think some sort of an accord has been reached, but I think the issues are the same. They've been hashed and rehashed. This seems to be a text amendment being done to solve a particular problem and I don't think that there's a reason to do that, or at least a good reason to do that. I expected something different to happen in the last three weeks than, than what did. But I, I'm here only to say that we still, uh, as the neighbor oppose the text amendment change. I don't think there's any more, uh, basis for reducing the side yard requirement than there would be, which evidently there is not, uh, to, uh, fuss at all with the front yard setback. I think the concept of a, of a study the same way that was done back, I believe in two thousand and two, um, is probably the way to go if there's going to be, uh, integrity ma, maintained in the process for the corridors of the city. So I, that's, I guess I'm rehashing what I've already said several times, but thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Would you, any care of rebuttal, any? Okay. Anyone else like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Thank you. I don't have testimony, but the, um, you'll notice that the applicant's attorney is not here today and I think I communicated with all of you that she had some physical reasons not to be here, but she did pass along to me some things that we, what she would like to have entered onto the record. to have entered onto the record. And one is the petition signed by 28 car dealer sales persons that in support of the text amendment. And the other one is an email, and I'm afraid I don't have it printed off, but I sent it, forwarded it to Teresa, and so I'd like to just read it because it's rather short. It's from the Westo Business Association, and Randy Haas, who is the president of the association, wrote, Ryan, that's the attorney, "The Westo Business Association has voted," as stated below, semicolon, "our business association executive board has voted to support City Ordinance 17-51, which amends H2 and H3 zoning in LMC, which is Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 27.62.100C, to reduce the setback requirements for motor vehicle sales and/or repair facilities to six foot with increased screening landscaping requirements, and permits use of facility's side and backyard for its business, except where the yard abuts a residential district. Thanks. Signed, Randy Haas."
Carl.
Yeah, thanks, Cindy. Appreciate getting that information, because Westo businesses have really worked hard to try to improve. And also for the individuals that you had. Looking at the sheet, there, I think there were 27 names, and they represented 12 different used car businesses. So, thanks.
Lyrian?
I have another staff question for David and Steve. Mr. Barber raised an issue, a concern about setback on the side yard versus the decision to wait on the setbacks in the front yard. Can you explain your rationale for granting one of the exceptions, but waiting to do a larger study for the other, just so that we get that on the record?
Sure. I think I'll let Steve answer that, because it has a lot to do with kind of consistency about how we handle side yard setbacks in different districts for this use.
Sure. So the setback in the H3 is 15 feet today, and A and B Auto is in the H3 district. And so with this amendment, it would allow it to go down to five feet. The H2 zoning district also has a five-foot setback, so it would be unchanged. So that was part of our thought, was both in the H2 and the H3 zoning districts, having a five-foot side yard for when you're next to a commercial property was appropriate. We have some districts where there is not a side yard requirement between two commercial districts. Of course, in some of those districts, they have a full 20-foot front yard setback. And so it's kind of, one of the things we'll be looking at is kind of balancing ultimately, do you have the grass at the side and the front? What is the best spot for that? But we thought for consistency's sake, having a five-foot in both the H2 and the H3 was appropriate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing portion of the agenda. We could vote on those items.
All right. Call the first item.
Item 13, approving a contract between the City of Lincoln and Kone Inc. for elevator maintenance services, city parking garages, for a three-year term with the option for three additional one-year terms, introduced by John Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Barrett?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 14, text amendment 17003, amending Title III Design Standards for Zoning Regulations by amending Section 4.3 Parking and Chapter 3.75 Neighborhood Design Standards to provide that no required parking space be allowed between the building and front property line except as otherwise provided in Section 27.67.030, introduced by John.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Lyrian. Discussion?
Well, at a time when our housing market is getting more and more competitive, this is a change that would remove an impediment to construction of single-family, two-family, and townhouse construction in a couple of our different zoning districts. And it got consent, it was on the consent agenda. Planning Commission received unanimous approval, and I tend to support it.
Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Barrett?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 15, approving Downtown Lincoln Association's amended 2016-2017 bid budget and program of work for Downtown and West Haymarket Management and Maintenance Business Improvement Districts, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Discussion. John?
Well, I'm between the horns of a dilemma here. I introduced this past my turn, and as you could tell, I had a number of questions. I guess I'd like to use this opportunity to say I am disappointed in our design process. Ms. Barrett is correct on some of these amenities, but we just haven't given the appropriate forethought to how it's going to take maintenance down the road. And we can't maintain parks, medians, and so many other areas in this city. And we just have to design better and have an appreciation for what it's going to cost down the road. I know Ms. Raybold, in her business, has similar challenges. And when you have those types of properties and so forth, there's a fine balance there. And a lot of times, you can achieve that beautification in one way that is very comparable to another, but it really eliminates, or I shouldn't say eliminates, but it reduces a lot of the expense for maintenance. For example, the irrigation is problematic. We're going to see it on the entryway from the airport. It's just there. A car goes up over the median and it's going to damage it. And I suspect a lot of this is going to require the services of plumbers and so forth. That gets very expensive. The bioswells, again, great ideas and so forth, that somewhat like the solar panels we have on the 27th and Holdridge Police Station, those don't work. And I think we're going to find that there are going to be problems with some of these innovative ideas, that perhaps this just isn't the place to do that. Mr. Landis was correct. This went through the process to be approved and so forth. But really, that little snowball starts down the Matterhorn way in the early stages before we even hear about it with the administration. And so I guess I am, I really am concerned that we come up with $80,000, another $150,000. Whether it's budgeted or not, we have so few dollars. And I know last week, I drove down South 14th Street, and the medians there from Old Cheney South were infested with dandelions, a foot tall. They just look hideous, quite frankly. And it's not the only place. It's around town, as we know. I've got other tennis advocates that want better care of local parks that have tennis courts and so forth. We can't do that. We did dedicate a wonderful facility at Woods this past week, but we've got other areas. And it goes on and on, that maintenance is a critical element to designing and making capital improvements in the city. And I just really want to reinforce, we have got to think that through more in the future.
Other comments? Jane, then Cindy.
Well, I do intend to support this. I know that when this process was started, it was a very thoughtful process in trying to design the plants that are hardy, indigenous to Nebraska, that are durable, that can withstand snow plows and heavy-duty rainfall. So there was a thoughtful process to make sure that these were lasting improvements to these specific areas. And as many of us know, that when you put in the dollars for the initial planting, you will have upfront costs on the initial establishment of those plants to make sure that they succeed. So there's additional costs upfront until they get established. So I think it's important, since we did make that investment in these areas, and without a doubt, they have greatly enhanced the downtown area and have made us one of the most attractive cities downtown areas in the United States. The one thing I want to say is that the P Street improvements have been phenomenal, drawing lots of people down to that entertainment area. And I can tell you, the first time I went outside after going to a movie at the Graham Theater and saw all the lights on P Street, and it was snowing, I thought it was just magical how beautiful that whole street looked and how attractive it made our city. So these are investments for our future. And I think with, if we're going to put in all these plants, and they're hardy plants, they still need the care and attention to get established. And certainly with the bioswells, it's a proven storm water mover, and I think those are an additional enhancement to the downtown area that I think we should be very proud of.
Cindy?
Yeah. So I'm proud of downtown, too. And I'm really grateful to the Downtown Lincoln Association for stepping up when the city asked them to take on these additional responsibilities in order to maintain additional areas. I though do share a concern that here it is end of May, and we're hearing about $80,000 more needed through fiscal ending October, or excuse me, August 31st, and then looking at $150,000 next year. That does cause me pause and concern, and that's why I asked the questions I asked, although I understand that they have taken on more responsibility, and that's the reason for the increase in the need for funds. So I'm going to support this, but I have my hesitation.
Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Well, I want to thank the DLA for the work they do to keep downtown clean and to focus on economic development. There's a lot of thought that goes into this work by the board and the staff, the DLA. And we're lucky to have them as a partner that can take on this responsibility, which otherwise would be more costly for Lincoln. And, you know, just to echo what Jane said, the bioswells are, in fact, stormwater management. So that's an important practical purpose for these, for some of the greenery downtown. And again, it's not just beautification, it's also economic development. I plan to support this item.
Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Barrett?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. We have item 19, text amendment 16020, amending Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code related to the zoning code by amending Section 27.62.100, to modify the front and side yard setbacks for car sales and remove conditions that are no longer needed by amending Section 27.67.040 to create a new parking requirement for motorized vehicle sales for lots less than two acres, and repealing Sections 27.62.100 and 27.67.040, introduced by Carl.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. We also have a motion to amend.
Motion to amend, number one.
Number one.
Second?
Moved by Lyrian, seconded by Jane.
And this motion to amend represents a compromise put together by staff and others involved in this process, applicant, to retain the existing front yard requirements in the H2 and H3 districts, which include the requirement that the front 12 feet of the front yard be screened with a 60% landscape screen, and to require a minimum five-foot side yard for motorized vehicle sales in the H3 district when abutting a non-residential district. And this was requested by the Planning Department.
Discussion on the motion to amend, number one. Cindy?
Thank you. I obviously am excited about the project that's going on between 33rd and 35th and Cornhusker. I'm also extremely supportive of businesses not being hampered by more requirements by the city. But I have to tell you, I'm a little disappointed by this particular compromise. I thought, here we had an actor that was willing to screen 90% at their location on the entryway at Cornhusker. The Westo Business Association indicated, not only did they send their email, but they indicated they would prefer to have the reduction and the screening rather than non-enforcement of what's currently in place. And so I was very hopeful that we were going to get buy-in from other independent car dealerships. And I think we did. We saw some that came forward at our last public hearing, that maybe they didn't even realize, as Mr. Henry said, they didn't even realize that they were buying property that where they would not be able to park right up to the sidewalk. And so that was unfortunate. But I think we could have had a win-win here for everyone, although I totally understand the applicants going ahead and accepting this compromise because it cost them less money. I was hoping they would do the screening and beautify Northeast Lincoln. So I'm going to support this, but I am really, I am disappointed that we're going to have to wait a year to see that beautification when it could have, I feel like it could have started sooner.
Jane?
Well, I think it's a good start into a dialogue that needs to take place. I had asked a lot of questions before. How come there was not compliance with the existing standards, going from 20 feet of setback to the 12-foot setback? And there was a lot of confusion, but there was no compliance. And, you know, going forward, you know, I am going to support this amendment, because I think it opens up a dialogue that needs to take place, and talk about how this community of vehicle sales can get together and do their part and be in compliance, and think about ways that they can have these new, hopefully even further modified changes in the future, come into compliance, and how they can enforce it themselves. And so, you know, with this car dealer on 33rd, I think I commend them. And there's nothing that stops him from voluntarily taking on the task of going ahead and kicking it up a notch, and being sort of the showcase in Northeast Lincoln and on 33rd, showing that they can automatically take these beautification steps. They don't need to wait for the discussion to take place. They can lead that discussion, and they can set a great example to all those in their industry, that this is how you really take care of an entryway to the city, and how you can beautify it and still enhance your own industry. I know that in the comprehensive plan, they talk about the entryways, and it says on page 4.6, "Major entryways to Lincoln should be studied, protected, and enhanced to create and express community pride." And certainly, the dealer on 33rd can take the initiative and do several upgrades and enhancements, and the screening and landscaping on their own. But I think this is a dialogue that is really critical, as we continue to make great improvements of the image of our city, both in downtown. Now, we're going to focus on the entryways, and how we can further enhance them and make it inviting and exciting place to come visit and open up your business. But I think it's important that we keep in mind the comprehensive plan. But there has to be a discussion and dialogue among the folks in this industry, how they can either self-enforce or come up with a reasonable bond that they can all agree on to make sure that the landscaping elements get done and that they are in compliance. So I really appreciate this first step. Hopefully, it opens up the dialogue, invites all the stakeholders to come up with suggestions and solutions out. They can be part of really enhancing the entryway in our city.
Anyone else? Carl?
Thanks. When we had the applicant here three weeks ago, there was an airshot, we saw, of the lot. And one of the concerns I had from seeing that picture was, at that point, there were no setbacks on the side yard. And fortunately, it's a vacant lot right now. But I could just envision how difficult that would be for a neighboring business, having cars bumped right up to the edge of their uses, whatever those uses might be. So this five-foot setback is a good win. And stormwater drainage, it allows more grass for that kind of percolation to go through, so that's a good thing. And the process, I'm kind of impatient, like maybe Cindy is sometimes, and would like to see things done yesterday. But I do believe that the process is important here, as all business owners are engaged in this discussion, and other stakeholders, too, to determine what is indeed the best solution for everybody, and then to go forward.
Anyone else?
Just add that, you know, this came to us with three parts, two of which were denied, and denied at Planning Commission. So I think that this compromise that's been developed since then shows an effort by all parties to try and make something work. And the idea that we would look at further study makes sense for something that could have ramifications for so many businesses. And to Mr. Barber's point, making broad text changes based on one application can have unintended consequences. So I think it does make sense to proceed with a closer look that might help us make better policy going forward.
Pretty good. Please call the roll on motion to amend, number one.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Barrett?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Now, in the main motion?
I need a second for that. It was introduced by Eskridge?
Raybold.
Oh, Raybold, okay.
We've already done that, yeah.
Thank you, sorry. I missed that. Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Barrett?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. We'll move on to our voting session for ordinance's third reading. Item number 20, text amendment 17007, amending Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code by repealing Section 27.26.090 regarding the location of buildings, structures, parking, and access drives and the preservation of required open space in the O2 Suburban Office District whenever the O2 district extends District whenever the O2 District extends further from the street than any abutting B1, B3, B4, H2, H3, or I1 District, amending Section 27.72.130 to delete an identical provision in subsection E and repealing Section 27.72.130, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion?
This one's sort of interesting because, you know, here's an example of a text change that was only, was created for one place in the entire city, and as it turns out, it's now obsolete, no longer necessary. So, we're back at this, making a change so that Madonna can expand its campus, and I tend to support this item.
All right. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. Item 21, change of zone 17006, application of Heartland Homes, Inc., for a change of zone from AGR Agricultural Residential District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at southwest 27th Street and West A Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. Resolutions first reading is items number 22 through 27. Ordinance's first reading is items 28 through 29. No items on our pending list date certain or pending list. That concludes our agenda.
Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear in the future agenda may do so at this time, as it is an open-mic session this evening. I also like to remind everyone that we have a Memorial Day weekend coming up, and I hope everyone in Lincoln will have a safe and happy weekend celebration.
Unless you want me to help you get back out. Oh, thank you. Terry Pope Gonzalez, please start.
Please start.
Okay. I'm one of those who's not the right color, right, Carl? Right, Gaylor Baird? But hey, don't worry about it. We're going to do some training today. Cindy, guess what I got for you? It's called the Freedom of Information Act. It's on the City of Lincoln. See Jeff right here and his buddy, the mayor? Hand-delivered me, demand! I have to put everything in writing when I speak to the city. Really. Jeff Kirkpatrick was my attorney, not public pretender, my attorney. Can you imagine anybody demanding anything from me? You know who I am? I'm that taxpayer. I didn't get to vote for any of you. It's an emergency room again. So, the ones who don't know, if you'd have left me alone, I'd have died in my own bed. So, this here is for Cindy. This is my paperclip. Remember, I deal with two- and three-year-olds. So, this is our paperclip. Teresa, sweetheart, can you hand that to her? And I'll try not to disturb your peace, okay? Now, here, this is for everybody else to take one. Please take one. Here, Teresa, because I can't walk over there, sorry. And here's yours, because Jeff here said I have to put it in writing. Everyone up there gets one, okay? Just pick one, anyone. Here you go, Teresa. Oh, Carl. No, no, I can't see. Roy, Roy. Roy came to see the little kids. And guess what? He didn't do a photo op. He stayed longer than 20 minutes. Gaylor Baird, she stayed a whole 20 minutes. Can you hand that to him, hon? That's a thank-you card. Remember, the little kids are two and three, okay? All right. Now, here is my filter. I have to have a filter when I come up here. This is the best I got. Teresa, I'll keep it because it does have a word on it that nobody here can say. I promised Carl we would be adults. The Gaylor Baird here is five years older than my son, so I had to explain her progress here, all right? I had explained to little kids in my neighborhood why they're not good enough, they're not the right color, right? Isn't that what it is? Because, hey, it has to be something, right? The little house was pristine condition when I got here. My husband was born in it April 3rd, 1953, graduated Lincoln High, 1971, then he went to Vietnam. Now, me, minute I open my mouth, you know I'm not from here. Me, I'm from Denver, Colorado. Now, talking about car lots, do you guys know Mr. Ryan? And I can't hear anymore. I can't see, I have a tumor. I mean, this is a wonderful city, isn't it? This is a city that sacrifices its first responders. Hey, now, this has nothing to do with Jeff. This was in the paper. Guess what? We have another dead kid. Another dead kid. Lincoln East Senior dies unexpectedly. This is Sunday, May 21st, 2017. Now, I'm so glad there were some first responders there to help that kid, right? Now, here's what it says. "A Lincoln East High School senior died unexpectedly early Saturday morning, police said. Lincoln Police Captain Bob Farber..." You know what a small world it is? He went to school with my husband's first wife's child. Hmm, so I must be the third wife, right? I really get tired of coming up here because, see, when you elect your leaders, they're supposed to do something, not just for the businesses. Now, something did happen. I asked somebody to bring me something. They bought it at your store. It's pig's ears. Because, see, the mayor says you have to be able to eat it. Well, I don't expect Roy here to eat it, okay? But I do expect you to get it for Detective Chad Barrett, badge number 1101. He helped take out our prostitution ring in our neighborhood. But hey, it's no big deal, right? We're the wrong color, and I don't mean any disrespect to you. I love your tan. Do you know what it cost me to get a tan like that? Jerry Schucraft was on the city council the first time I came to it, and I expected better. But hey, here's yours, Teresa. Can you hand that to Mr. Roy there? And Roy, because I spell your name wrong, sorry, but the little kids know that Christ is in your name. That's all I got to say, at least this time around. Now, those are bills, okay? So, somebody will be seeing me, right? Real soon.